The July 16th, 2024 meeting of the Seattle City Council will come to order. It's 2:01 PM. I'm Tanya Wu, President Pro Tem of the Council. Before the Clerk calls the roll, and before we begin, I would like to recognize our colleague, Security Manager Jim Hillis, who passed away while on duty last night. I would like to have a moment of silence out of respect for his friends, family, and colleagues as we share in their grief today. Thank you. So, thank you. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kettle?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Present.
Councilmember Morales? Councilmember Rivera?
Present.
Councilmember Saka?
Here.
Councilmember Strauss?
Present.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Here.
Council President Nelson?
Present.
Council President Pro Tem Wu?
Present.
Nine present.
Colleagues, at this time, we will open the hybrid public comment period. Madam Clerk, how many speakers are signed up today?
We have 15 in person and two remote.
So, we will start with speakers in council chambers first. We'll alternate with the first 10. Today, each speaker will have about one minute. Madam Clerk, I will now hand this over to you to present the instructions and call on registered speakers.
Thank you. The public comment period is up to 20 minutes. Speakers will be called on in the order in which they are registered. We will all, we will first call on the in-person speakers and then the remote speakers. Speakers will hear a chime when 10 seconds are left of their time, and speakers' mics will be muted if they do not end their comments within the allotted time to allow us to call on the next speaker. We'll start with the in-person speakers. Thank you.
Our first three speakers is Terry McLean, Mike Gain, Steve Pumphrey. It's one minute.
Thank you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Terry. This is my second meeting. I live in Lower Queen Anne, and I was at the first meeting because I happened to walk into illegal street racing. That was over in Elliott, right near where I live, and I took videos. I called 911. I reported it. The cops came, and he's the one that suggested I reach out to the city council. So, this is why I'm at the second meeting. That meeting, I took videos and I sent it to the news media. So, the reason I'm here, because I care about my town. I want it to be safe, and I had questions about, I just hope that it's voted for, sorry, I thought I'd have longer. I just want this to get passed so our community can be safe and to end illegal street racing. Thanks.
Mike Gain and Steve Pumphrey, and then Haushen, if you don't mind lining up to either one of these two podiums so we can get through speakers. Thank you.
Ready? My name's Mike Gain, and I'm from West Seattle. I'm in favor of the proposed bill CB 120806. It's past time that we do something to reduce the crime, racing, reckless driving, stunt driving, racing motorcycles, and groups gathering, especially the groups gathering that encourage this type of activity. It's completely out of control and very dangerous to allow these activities to continue on our public streets. Harbor and Alki have become a regular place for these activities to occur and to grow. Day and night, it's continual, from 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock, 3, and even later. It's a very dangerous activity. It needs to stop. We need to take our streets back. We urge you all in the city council to approve this bill. Allowing this behavior to continue, it's not right. Those who break our laws need to have consequences. That's one of the problems. They need to face the consequences. The activities all around our city have become magnets for crime, gatherings, criminal activity, shootings, injuries, and even deaths. We need to stop this, and I approve.
Steve Pumphrey, I live on Harbor Avenue, and I think several of you council members know me. I'm here in support of Council Bill 120806, in particular, the amendment related to penalties for spectators. I was here a year ago, and we asked that you pass, and you did pass, the designated racing zones and cameras for speed-activated ticketing. Nothing has happened in that regard. So, I hope that we can move forward with more legislation, and remember, legislation doesn't get anything done. Action gets things done, and that means enforcement. Unfortunately, we have a police department that's been taken apart by your predecessors, and they are yet to be able to rebuild their force to where they can enforce. Therefore, in order to create consequences and accountability, we're going to have to employ technology to determine how we enforce this. That means license-detecting systems and speed-activated camera ticketing systems, among others. Thank you.
Steve, followed by Haushen and Susan Ornstein.
Hi, my name is Haushen. I'm just gonna read some news to you today. The first from King Five on July 10. Delivery fee for our Seattle restaurant closing drastically changing the business model. The Oma Bop on Capitol Hill has closed. The owner told King Five that they saw a 40% reduction in delivery sales in February and March. Their business rely heavily on food delivery, and these days, it is not sustainable for them to run the Capitol Hill location. The second article from Seattle Times, July 11. Mott Pizza acquired by California Restaurant Group. While this article only outlined the bankruptcy and acquisition about this beloved Seattle-based chain without telling the financial detail leading to Mott's device, we all know what a pizza shop business is made of. Another article from Eaters on June 27. This article should highlight all the restaurant closing in this year. Given the limited time, I can only highlight June and May. June, Fair Isle Brewing, Ballard, Cupcake Royals in downtown, A Row in Green Lake, Brower's Cafe in Fremont. Sell it in May, Sellish Seafood in Ballard.
Next speaker, please.
In West Seattle, that I could easily have written myself. To all Seattle's city council members, I implore you to vote today in support of the street racing penalties proposed by Councilmember Rob Saka, as described. I am a resident of Harbor Avenue Southwest. For the past two years, I've witnessed street racing, drifting, stunt driving, complete with audience members cheering on the activities nearly every night of the week, year-round. The racing activities also promote additional illegal activities, drug use and dealing, fights, partying, extremely loud music and fights, and now, more recently, gunfighting and murder in my front yard. This activity goes on in other parts of the city. The proposal made by Councilmember Saka is the first step in the right direction. The safety of city residents is at stake, not to mention decreasing property values, negative effect on local business enterprises, and the abject fear that many live within their own homes. It's incumbent on each of you to take positive action and approve Amendment 1 to CB 120806 today. Three seconds.
The next three speakers is gonna be Carla Coats, Charlotte Stark, Stacy Bass Walden, and then Greg Drobnek. So, if you can please line up to any of these two podiums. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carla Coats. I live on Alki, Alki Avenue. It is a nightly thing that we hear these loud racing muffler-enhanced cars, and they're not there, they didn't come for dinner. They didn't come for a damn thing, other than to show off for each other. They didn't come to buy an ice cream cone. They don't live there. They don't live there. Nobody likes them. Nobody. I've done my own personal survey. This is not scientific, but I've asked lots of people, different ages. Do you like these cars? Nobody likes them. Nobody likes them. And I think it's gonna take really some effort to get them off Alki. I think for Alki, it's sort of a culture that's built in there. I think it's had support. I wouldn't be surprised if policemen were racers.
Thank you. I think we are out of time. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Charlotte Stark, President of Alki Community Council. In part, I snowballed into that role because my property was hit by a street racer, knocked out 40 feet of our property with a vehicle landing at 3 o'clock in the morning next to our bedroom windows. Thus, I am here with all of my Alki neighbors, and I'm proud to support Rob Saka's amendment on the spectators. I'm also an award-winning journalist with an Emmy for street racing reporting. 17 deaths in San Diego in 13 months was too much. The city took action. That was years ago, but the sport has evolved. You have to address the show, or you will not stop the racing. So, the production, the organizers, the spectators, the people promoting on social media are actually being addressed by other cities with fines. That means if you stop and you block a road for street racers, if you block first responders, if you promote on social media, you are held accountable.
Excuse me. Next is Stacy, and then followed by Stacy, Greg Drobnek, and then Arianna Riley.
Hello, my name is Stacy. Thank you for having us today. I live on Alki. I've been there for 25 years. Exactly what Charlotte said, exactly what Steve said, it's gotten worse. We would like to back Rob Saka on what he is trying to have done and push those penalties. Make it not fun for them. Make it almost impossible for them to even want to do it. Suspend their license. I'm talking, go deep on them, not just the fine that they may ignore. Take the license away. Suspend them. That's tapping into their job security. Make it tougher for them. Thank you.
Hello, council. My name is Greg Drobnek. I am a resident of West Seattle for 72 years, Beach Drive for 12, Fort Laroia, now I'm eight years on 1300 Alki Avenue. I've witnessed so much happening. I want to support Rob Saka and the bill 120806 and all of its amendments. We need help, and we're asking you for help. We need people to come out, and you need to witness what goes on, not just once or twice a week, every day, every night. The noise, the confusion, the racing, the killings. I've witnessed two cars going over the embankment in the last year down there from street racing, and people getting hurt, people getting injured, and it scares the daylights out of everybody. We need your support. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Arianna Riley. I'm also a resident of West Seattle, like all these other people. I'm a delivery driver. I work lunch in Georgetown and dinner into midnight in West Seattle and White Center six days out of the week. In February, my average downtime between orders was one hour. Now, my average downtime between orders is less than 10 minutes, usually between 2 to 5 minutes. This is true for other drivers that I encounter as well. A driver I met yesterday said he works downtown in Capitol Hill and averages 1 to 2 minutes of downtime between orders. At this current moment and over the past few months since late March, there is no problem with order volume. The vast majority of restaurants I talk to say their delivery volume is the same as this time last year. This is going to be a hard pill for many to swallow, but if your delivery volumes are still down, it is not due to pay up. Many restaurants I talk to do a high volume of delivery and couldn't do more, even if they wanted to, due to staffing and kitchen capacity. Please keep pay-up in place as is. Thank you.
We'll now go to remote, and then go back to in-person.
For our remotes, oh, excuse me. For our remote speakers, I want to remind you to please press star 6 after you hear the message that you have been unmuted. And our first remote speaker is Alberto Alvarez, followed by Oliver Misca. Go ahead, Alberto.
Oh, hello. Just bear with me. I'm a little tired today. It's been a very busy week. It's been busier and busier every week, actually. People are still ordering full-family meals of that delicious curry from their favorite place across town. We are in the midst of heatwaves, and drivers are out there, from Lake City to West Seattle, from Ballard to Chinatown, from downtown to Rainier Beach. We are here. In the rain and snow, we will always be here, 24/7/365. We have earned everything PayUp has given to us. This is a headline from the Seattleleader.com. This Seattle restaurant has dropped DoorDash and hired its own delivery drivers. Vaca Baca unplugged the app to provide better customer service, its owner says. PayUp works for both independent contractors and hired drivers. PayUp stands provides workers with fair living wage, accounts for expenses, and grants protections of dignity, safety, and level playing field. Keep pay-up. Vote no on any reduction.
Thank you, Alberto. Our last remote speaker signed up is Oliver Misca. Go ahead, Oliver.
Hi, y'all, and thanks for the name pronunciation. You did it exactly right. My name is Oliver Misca. I'm an educator in Seattle and a lifelong Seattleite. I first want to just recognize and absolutely validate all of the safety concerns that members of our city have shared with us. And in no way do I want to invalidate the very legitimate safety concerns people have. But I do want to bring up just an issue that this piece of legislation brings forward, which really involves the First Amendment, especially the freedom of assembly and the freedom of speech, as strongly worn against any fees and punishments for, that would ultimately criminalize bystanders of these incidences. And I totally understand folks wanting to de-incentivize this kind, but criminalizing bystanders really runs.
Thank you, Oliver. That was our last remote speaker. We'll move back to in-person.
Right. The next speakers are gonna be Rita Holsman, Alex Irman, Jenna Edlund. If you can please get to one of the two mics. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Rita Holsman, and I am a lifelong resident of Seattle. I want to thank the Public Safety Committee for bringing a proposed ordinance on street racing and street racing spectators to the full council for a vote today. This ordinance, and especially the two amendments proposed by Councilmember Saka, will allow the police department and the city attorney's office to respond in meaningful ways to dangerous and disturbing street racing events, such as those that occurred recently in various Seattle neighborhoods. If street racing is not dealt with effectively, it will change the character of our city for the worse. Street racing on Alki is a longstanding issue and was a significant factor in the decision two of my family members made this past spring to move away from that neighborhood. In fact, they ultimately decided to leave the city of Seattle altogether. When Seattle loses residents such as my family members, who contribute positively to the daily life and local economy of their now-former neighborhood because they don't always feel safe there, it is time to address the issue. Please vote to approve CB 120806 as amended. Thank you.
Alex Irman, followed by Jenna, excuse me, Edlund.
Zhihai, my dirty damn Nazi Gestapo hunter, bandito and killer. My name is Alex Irman, and president of Stand Up America. I love you. You my best counsel, what is I know? For this freaking idiot, 750,000 people, one minute is too much. Look, they are pure cretina, you know what it means? It's coming, accept, one minute. Nobody have one minute. Is this very happy? Look, they faces, it's very happy. No one stand up and talk, no, I'm not happy. 750,000 brainwash for 25 years.
Please pause the timer. Alex, is there something you want to speak about on the calendar?
What is you talking? Are you talking about your hotel, or about somebody want kill you? So, why you don't give me chance speak?
Are you speaking on something that's all that could hold for today?
No, 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 no. You speak for my time. Don't forget about this.
Go ahead, continue.
You're not exactly.
Continue.
No, exactly. It's not good. So, what's up? Where is my time? You can speak? This I demand better room open every week, one day for free conversation for 3 minutes, because you cannot control this idiot so long without reason.
Following Jenna is gonna be Andre, I believe, and then John Stromston.
Hi, I'm Jenna Edlund, a 20-year resident from Belltown. I'm here to speak about public safety and drug use, specifically, street racing. It's out of control in Belltown. I've had to call 911 twice in the last few weeks and have personally recorded videos while walking on the street. Drug use in person is out of control, and the audit that you just put out and put so much work into shows that. If you would just enforce the laws that you already have on the books, such as Ricky's Law, and stop people from doing drugs on our streets, that would help. Every day, I know more people in my building that are moving out of the city of Seattle because of these things. I would also like you to consider that there's gonna be a lot of pushback with the building pilot program, specifically 2616 and Western Avenue, allowing 20-story buildings to go in.
Hello, my name is Andre Ciceron. I lived in Belltown for 15 years, and like many of you, I've seen the city grow and change over the years. I'm here to raise my concerns about the Living Building Pilot Program, specifically, the amendment that the Seattle Department of Construction Inspection has proposed that allows projects in this program to exceed the height of 1,000 or 145 feet regardless of lot size. I applaud the city to look at creative ways to grow and to grow responsibly and sustainably. However, this program will allow a 20-story building two blocks from the waterfront to be built, where all the other buildings are capped at 13 stories. This will reduce light, green space, and have a negative effect on the community. I encourage the city council to look at other creative ways to develop sustainably, not at the cost of height and the current character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
King Five did a story last week detailing how Oma Bop in Capitol Hill is going out of business, and the owner specifically blamed the downturn in delivery orders because of the PayUp bill fees. We warn the council of this, but Working Washington and their supporters said everything was working fine. Drive Forward did a recent survey, and the results showed no one except Instacart and Amazon Flex workers are making the minimum wage, and they barely are. The majority are all averaging well below Seattle minimum. Uber Eats couriers are at $14 an hour. Restaurants are down and going out of business, and gig workers are making provably far less money than before. Please stop listening to lobbying groups like Working Washington, who have been spreading false information to you for seven months now. All data so far has clearly shown that PayUp is harming both restaurants and the majority of gig workers. They all said it was too soon to do anything. How many people have to be harmed, and how many restaurants have to go out of business before it isn't too soon? Please don't listen to the people who come to this room and.
Thank you. Your time is up. That was the last registered speaker.
So, we have reached the end of the list of registered speakers. The public comment period is now closed. Thank you for your comments today. We have, if you are encouraged to either submit written public comments in the sign-up cards available on the podium, or email the council@council@seattle.gov. If there is no objection, the introduction and referral calendar will be adopted. So, hearing no objection, the introduction and referral calendar is adopted. If there is no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. So, we will now consider the proposed consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar includes minutes of the July 9, 2024, Council Bill 120814, payment of bills, and one appointment from the Parks, Public Utilities, and Technology Committee. Are there any items council members would like to remove from today's consent calendar? So, hearing none, I move to adopt the consent calendar. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar. Will the Clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the consent calendar?
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss? I'm sorry. Councilmember Strauss, thank you. Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Council President Nelson? Council President Nelson?
Just a second, Jody. I see she's trying to log on really quick.
Okay.
IT, can you let her in, please? Okay, Jody, can you please repeat the council president?
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
And Council President Pro Tem Wu?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The consent calendar items are adopted. Will the Clerk please affix my signature to the minutes and legislation on the consent calendar on my behalf? So, will the Clerk please read the short title of item 1 into the record?
The report of the Public Safety Committee, item 1, Council Bill 120806, relating to street racing, adding the crime of racing, adding the traffic infraction of vehicle participation, unlawful racing, adding the civil infraction of attending at an unlawful race event. The committee recommends the bill passes amended.
Councilmember Kettle, as the Chair of the committee, you are recognized per via the committee report.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. Bottom line, and thank you, everyone who's attended today on the subject. Bottom line is, street racing is plaguing communities across our city. Street racing is a danger and a threat to traffic and pedestrian safety, to our public safety. And street racing, to be clear, is also a threat to the health and the quality of life of our neighbors. Street racing also pollutes our environment, whether from where the tire hits the road with the particles from the tires, the carbon emissions and all the like, but also noise pollution. This is something that our neighbors are hearing all the time, and this is pollution. Street racing, and importantly, the lack of action contributes to the idea that it's permitted. And this in itself is a problem, because it goes to the idea of the permissive environment that underlines our public safety challenges in our city. So, again, bottom line, this is an emergency. It's an emergency right now, and that's why this bill was turned into an emergency bill, as we have seen in Queen Anne, but also in other areas like West Seattle. Thank you very much for coming. And Mr. Gain, as it turns out, I have your email, and I was gonna highlight a few things. First, the Harbor-Alki Neighborhood Group, which I presume all you're participating in, noted it is past time to do something to reduce the crime of racing, reckless driving, stunt driving, racing motorcycles, and groups gathering and participating in this behavior. It is completely out of control and is very dangerous to allow these activities to continue on our public streets, later saying, "This very dangerous activity needs to stop. We need to do what we can to make our streets safe again. We urge you all to take immediate action." And that's what we're doing. I would like to thank, as Chair of the Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Saka for his amendments to our bill, and also to Councilmember Wu here on the dais, who's co-sponsoring the bill, as she sees as, you know, at-large across the city, the impacts of street racing. And I ask my colleagues for your support. I also wanted to add briefly, really quick, too, because it's, everything is somewhat tied together, is that I was not here for Thursday's meeting related to overdoses and crime. But I also want to thank the city auditor team for that report on overdoses and crime, which is clearly challenging in what we see on our streets. And what I saw this morning on Third Avenue, I. And what I saw this morning on Third Avenue, I walked Third Avenue from James all the way up with a group of concerned residents, business owners, and others that are concerned about what's happening on our streets. So we have the street racing, but we also have the other challenges that we're facing. And then we need to press forward across the front, all fronts to make our streets safer. So again, thank you to those that have spoken, and I again ask for your support, colleagues, for this street racing bill.
Thank you. Are there any comments on the bill? Councilmember Saka?
Thank you. I don't know, can, yeah, apparently my camera's not working, and pardon me. As I'm talking, I noticed that my voice seems a little raspy, but I was cheering on my daughter's Little League team, happy to report they won. I am, I want to, I want to thank all my constituents and to my citywide colleagues, our shared constituents who took the time to show up in person or remotely and share your feedback. It is very empowering from my perspective. And colleagues, I also ask for your support on this bill, as specifically amended. I love Chair Kettle, our Public Safety Committee. I appreciate how, your comments, how you basically called out some specific quotes from our Alki Harbor Avenue residents and neighbors and their views, and love how they came up and said it in their own words today, or some of them in their own words today. And special shout out to, to community member Stacy Bass Walden. I love that quote, "Make it not fun for them." So anyways, I ask for your support on this bill, colleagues, as amended. But I do want to thank our community members for showing up. Chair, Public Safety Chair Kettle, I appreciate you and your strong leadership, and together with Councilmember Wu, for getting this, shepherding this emergency piece of legislation that's critically needed now more than ever. Also want to thank the mayor, Mayor Harrell, and City Attorney Davidson for their leadership on this issue as well, because too many people are dying, and you know, this, what's going on is preventable. With respect to a public comment I heard about, you know, constitutional rights, look, the fact is that the spectator component is modeled after an existing longstanding, by the way, ordinance in the city of Kent, long, been on the books for a long time. And unlike the city of Kent, it does not, in fact, criminalize being a spectator. Instead, it makes it a, our, our bill here, as it meant it, would make it a civil infraction. And so we're mindful of all these concerns, now it's time to act. And I think this bill puts us, strikes the right balance between the competing demands and constitutional rights, and the rights of people who want their community safe across the city, whether it's in Alki, Harvard Avenue, Magnolia, it's all, it's going all around. So in any event, colleagues, ask for your support for this bill. Want to thank everyone again for showing up.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Rivera, then Councilmember Morales, and Council President Nelson.
Thank you, Councilmember Pro Tim Wu. I want to just thank my colleagues, Councilmember Kettle and Councilmember Wu, and Councilmember Saka, and the rest of the Public Safety Committee for bringing this forward. I know that this is something that I've heard from constituents in the D4 about, in terms of Sandpoint Way, it's happening in various areas of the city. And I'm very pleased to be able to support this legislation, because we need to do something about this. And so I think that is enough said on that. Really appreciate you bringing this forward, and I will be supporting this. And the D4 constituents, thank you.
Councilmember Morales?
Thank you. Last year, council passed, and I voted in favor of Council Bill 120600 to establish additional uses for automated traffic safety cameras and designating restricted racing zones. And I supported it because similar dangers exist on Rainier Avenue and on Martin Luther King. That said, the Seattle Municipal Code makes reckless driving under current city law a gross misdemeanor, and not having the word "race" explicitly defined is not necessary for the city to hold street racers accountable already. In 2023, state legislators passed Senate Bill 5606 to deter illegal racing, and that went into effect this January first. Those convicted under state law already are subject to a $5,000 fine and up to 364 days in jail. It also makes those knowingly aiding and abetting to be prosecuted under the same statute. So I don't believe we need more criminalization of this activity. All of that can already be prosecuted. But what we do need is safe places for young adults to go. We need better lighting on our streets. We need to design our streets to make it difficult for drivers to race on them, and that's why we just approved a $1.5 billion transportation levy package to begin to address all of that other infrastructure that's needed. The Seattle Police Department has existing authority to investigate and enforce under state criminal law. This legislation will not make our community safer, but it will require more attorney time prosecuting these crimes, and that is not a good use of our resources. We just passed license plate legislation, and I believe that between that and the existing state laws, it's enough to address the street racing that is happening in the city of Seattle. In short, I don't believe this is the best use of our police powers, and I will be voting no.
Council President Nelson?
Thank you very much, first of all, Council President Pro Tim Wu for taking over for me today. I am traveling, so I really appreciate you stepping up. I guess my message is that I, first of all, thank you Chair, Public Safety Chair Kettle. I mean, you and City Attorney Davidson worked on this, and you expedited it, and I really do appreciate your attention to this issue. Last year, people remember, there was a death at a street racing event on Capitol Hill. So we're not just talking about fun and games here, people die. I want to say that I just take the, I'll take an all-of-the-above approach. Yes to lights, yes to more activities for youth, and then yes to using all the tools in our toolbox to interrupt dangerous activities. So thank you very much, all of you, and I will be supporting this measure. Oh, thank you very much, Councilmember Saka, for your amendments and also bringing out the community. I spoke with the West Seattle folks probably one of, at some point early on in my tenure here, so this has been an ongoing issue for them. Thank you very much, everyone.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Pro Tim. Did I say you're right? Pro Tim, Councilmember Wu. Did I say that right? Okay, sorry. You know, yes, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Kettle, for bringing this, and thank you, Councilmember Saka, for your amendments. I sit in the Public Safety Committee and going to be supporting this bill. Last year, four people were shot on Capitol Hill. One of them passed away. Her name is Essence Green. And the family, officers could not break up the, they could not enforce, unfortunately, well, the activity that was going on in Pike Pine. I live on 23rd. Cars are racing constantly on 23rd and shooting guns off constantly. So anyways, I'm going to be supporting this. I think that whatever we can do to make it safer for our streets, for our kids, this activity needs to stop in Seattle, and it's a danger to people who live close, closely to, you know, when the activity is happening, and also the people that are participating, and also the people that are standing by looking that have been hit from the cars drifting or, you know, so forth. So anyways, I want to thank Councilmember Kettle for bringing this, and Councilmember Saka for your amendments. I will be supporting this today. Thank you.
Councilmember Kettle?
Thank you, Council President Pro Tim Wu. I just wanted to know, first, I wanted to say, again, traffic and pedestrian safety is public safety. I've been working this from the Queen Anne and that area of the city, you know, Magnolia, Inter Bay, Uptown, and Westlake over the years, and now I'm doing so here in the city. And yes, we need to press forward on all the different pieces noted, whether it's lighting, how the roads are constructed. You know, there's a number of different things that we can improve, our traffic and pedestrian safety key. But this legislation is needed for all the reasons that I mentioned in my first noted. But I will also add that this bill is also about aligning Seattle Municipal Code, the SMC, to state law, to the RCW. And we have to do this right. We are doing it cleanly, working with the city attorney's office. One, two, three, four, four major sections. And we have to do this because the city attorney cannot do this unless it's within the Seattle Municipal Code. There's a reason why I'm working with the city attorney on this, and this is the reason why it's important. And, you know, and it's, and it was done cleanly. Learning the lessons from last year's, you know, trying to line up SMC with the RCW related to public drug use and possession, we did this cleanly, and we're pressing forward on this. And this is what it's doing. And I also want to thank, again, to that point, adding the two points that Councilmember Saka added to it, because checking in the community, you know, $500 wasn't enough to deter. So that's why we have the three pieces to this in amendment number one. We have to have that deterrence point. Otherwise, more people are going to lose their lives, more people are going to have impacted, whether it's having a car showing up at, you know, against their house where their bedroom is, or whatever it may be. We have to pass this law. We have to sync up RCW and the SMC, and this is the best way to do it. So thank you.
So I grew up going to car shows. I grew up going to import shows. And, you know, we have a respect for the culture of modern cars, but I think this is very separate from racing. As a community member, we would attend these shows, but once these cars start moving, we leave. As part of the community watch, when we hear that these events are happening, we usually like to show up at most events to help let people know what's going on and to protect people, but we don't show up for these events, since we know how dangerous they can be. Because we often forget that a car, while a symbol of freedom, power, can also be fatal. So we listen closely to community members from Alki Beach, to Belltown, to Capitol Hill, and even the Chinatown International District. The call for safer streets is loud and clear. Street racing is a perilous activity, claiming the lives of bystanders, passengers, and drivers every year. And what some see as some kind of exciting activity, we must recognize the profound danger to both participants and the general public. And so, you know, this has really evolved into a serious public health risk. In cities like Seattle, we're not just talking about racing, we're also seeing an increase in drifting, street takeovers. Popular tricks like burnouts, you know, when you spin the tires really quickly without moving, may look impressive, but they hold the potential to become incredibly dangerous. So I want to make it clear, we cannot and will not use city land or public roadways to condone or facilitate these activities due to the massive liability they present. And for those who feel the need to express themselves with speed, there are safe sanctioned events and areas that will allow you to perform these tricks at racetracks. These venues are designed to handle the risks involved and provide a controlled environment where enthusiasts can safely enjoy their passion. So leave these high-risk maneuvers to the professionals in a controlled environment, and let's work together to ensure our streets remain safe for everyone.
Councilmember Kettle, if there are no other comments, I'll let you have the last word.
I think I've had my last word, thank you.
Great, so.
Councilmember Wu, may I add one more thing?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Rivera.
I just wanted to add that, you know, we also, we need more tools in our toolbox and not less. And I see, you know, we pass legislation, if it doesn't work to control the behavior, the negative behavior that we're trying to address, then, you know, we need to look at the laws and seeing if we need to add anything that will have the intended impact on this dangerous activity. So I see this as one way to further address and have more tools in the toolbox to further address the activity that is happening, and we also need to be responsive to our constituents. I know I've heard from constituents from the D4, like I said, on Sandpoint Way. I see Councilmember Saka's constituents here in chambers today, and I thank you for being here. And this is something that obviously we have not been able to curtail up to this point. So not taking away from past legislation that may have already been passed, this just adds to it to make sure we're curtailing this dangerous behavior. So I did want to say that, and also the importance of being responsive to our constituents who are dealing with this on the ground. Thank you.
So will the clerk please call the roll on the bill?
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
No.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Council President Pro Tim Wu?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one opposed.
The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? So will the clerk please read item two into the record? Agenda item two, the report of the Parks, Public Utilities, and Technology Committee, Council Bill 120807, relating to Seattle Public Utilities, authorizing General Manager and Chief Executive Officer of Seattle Public Utilities, or designate execute an agreement between Seattle Public Utilities and the King County Flood Control Zone District for the South Park Interim Flood Preparedness and Response Program. The committee recommends the bill pass. Thank you. Councilmember Hollingsworth, as Chair of the committee, you are recognized to provide the committee report.
Awesome, thank you. I'll be super brief. Colleagues, this passed four in favor and none opposed. This is interlocal agreement between SPU and our King County Flood Zone Control District. The legislation will improve, reduce flood risk, and improve safety within our South Park neighborhood, and the proposed actions will also improve community resilience towards climate change, supporting safety and preparedness to the increased risk of flooding and extreme weather events. I'll pause while I know that there's some people, I thought they came here for this strict piece of legislation for the flood control district one. But obviously, extreme weather events have been increasing across the United States. We've seen Hurricane Barrel happen within our country, and the rising heat infrastructure that's going on in Atlantic Ocean. And so, you know, this better prepares us. Seventy-five percent of the neighborhood in South Park are residents of color, and this continues to make sure that this is a safe environment for, you know, King County, and then obviously, South Park. So would love everyone's support on this. Thank you.
Are there any comments on the bill? Sounds pretty straightforward. Will the clerk please call the roll of the bill?
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Council President Pro Tim Wu?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? So is there any further business to come before the council?
Council President, I just want to remind that I have asked to be excused next Monday and Tuesday, the 22nd and 23rd.
Noted, thank you. Councilmember Strauss?
Thank you, Council President Pro Tim. I want to appreciate the fact that you took a full minute of silence at the beginning of this meeting for our dear friend Jim Hillis, who has loyally served the city of Seattle for many years and passed away on the job last night. I just wanted to make this, take this moment to, if his family or friends are watching, Jim was a, I consider Jim to be a friend of mine. He's somebody who, I think, we talk a lot about safety. When Jim is in this room, I feel more safe. And it's just hug somebody you love. Jim was a good friend of mine. Thank you.
Remember, coming to council, to talk to council and seeing Jim here, he was a regular fixture at every single council meeting. He will be missed. Council President Nelson, did you have a comment? You are muted.
Hi there, I'm sorry. I, I would like to rescind my excuse, my excusion for next week on the 23rd, I believe. So I will be present on the, at the city council meeting on the 23rd, but not on the, at the briefing meeting on Monday. And then thank you, both of you, for your words about Jim, yes, sitting there at the dais and seeing him back there. This adds a smile to the meeting and also a sense of safety, so thank you very much for recognizing. Thanks.
Thank you. So if there is no objection, Council President Nelson has rescinded her excuse absence. Councilmember Morales has also asked to be excused. And so we have reached the end of today's agenda. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on July 23rd. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on July 23rd at 2:00 PM. So hearing no further business, we are adjourned.